Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agendas. Are there motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the agenda has been amended. Next order of business is proclamation. I believe we have four to be read into the record.
Councilman Mosley presents, oh, yeah. Councilwoman Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, May 3rd, 2024, to be Franciscan Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman Mosley presents now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare April 27th, 2024, to be Joy Sado Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, May 6th, 2024, to be Yom Hashoah Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilman Coghill presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, May 4th, 2024, to be Gold Star Family Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
There are motion to approve?
They're moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All four have been approved. I do have listed a will of council between Councilman Coghill, Sharland, and Smith. Would you want to do that now or do you want to wait for the other members?
I'll wait for them if we can.
Alright, so we'll do it under motions and resolutions. Alright, so that will take us to public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state, the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Pittsburgh, sister city of Wuhan, China. I'm a member of the American Society for Microbiology, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. What we are after is optimal information and intelligence, trans DPRP, for the solution to our problems. My PC record is ninety-nine, more than ninety-nine percent accurate. A concern of county and city councils, Allegheny and Pittsburgh Local, In-National Safety, LSNS. In Amorado, Katena, and Genie-Lavelle are responsible for containing viral, bacterial, and fungal threats. The city county building is not biosafe. There are no checks in the entryways for viruses, bacteria, or fungi. No in situ available vericides, bacteriocides, and fungicides. This council room is not virally, bacterially, or fungally biosafe. There are no monitors showing VBF levels. We need a kiosk outside showing those levels. Africa, Nigeria, Haiza, LSNS lethal quayar, cuta virus, outbreak control. Pittsburgh offices of mayor and council offer zero specific info intel regarding naturally occurring SARS-CoV-1s, H5N1 virus, which is expanding across the United States. Virions in the council room? What is the quantity per m cube or quality? Artificially altered viruses? What? What are they doing in the Oakland virology center? Asia, Japan, Nihongo, LSNS, Sae Kin, bacterium? Breakout prevent? Offices of mayor and council. Zero information and intelligence on naturally occurring MRSA and VRE. What are the bacterial colonies existing in the council room? Artificial gain-loss function bacteria? CRISPR-Cas can edit, restrict, modify genes of the Helicobacter pylori 26695, the stomach ulcer causer, from the gene total of 1576 to get HP loss via bacteriophage. In Amorado and Genie, no. What's cooking, to put it crudely, in the BSL3 in Oakland? SL Latin America, Mexico, Espanol, Hongo, fungus? What about the break-in of Candida RSNR hospitals? The offices of mayor and council don't offer us specific information about these levels or the counters that are available to us. This must change. We need to have the information available to our people when they come in the room.
Our last registered speaker is Chad Ringblum.
Good morning. My name's Chad Ringblum. I'm from the South Hills. Here the word of the Lord is written in Psalm 2, verses 1 through 7. Why did the nations rage and the people's plot in vain? The kings of the earth set themselves and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against his anointed saying, "Let us burst their bonds apart and cast away their cords from us." He who sits in the heavens laughs, and the Lord holds them in derision. Then he will speak to them in his wrath and terrify them in his fury, saying, "As for me, I have set my king on Zion, my holy hill." I will tell of the decree, the Lord said to me, "You are my son; today I have begotten you." The Christian charge has failed for the most part in recent years to proclaim the authority of Christ to the community, and the situation in the city reflects this. Among the people are movements that sought and continue to seek destabilization of law and order by defunding the police, cashless bail, and several other programs such as abstaining the prosecution of theft that amounts to less than a thousand dollars. We have death cults who fight tooth and nail to defend a reprehensible act of abortion. There are movements who deny basic truths like God made them male and female. All these things make the innocent into prey. John Calvin wrote, "When God wants to judge a nation, he gives them wicked rulers." These are the people that you represent. And in practice, the ordinances and laws that you pass, or statutes that you pass, make you wicked rulers. You can see in verses 1 through 3 that the Psalmist is writing about more than just Israel. The nations rage, the people's plot. We can see in these verses that the Psalm is, the Psalm reached past mere spiritual and religious speak. The Psalm is directed toward governments, the kings of the earth, and the rulers take counsel together. You can also see that the Psalm has messianic language and it speaks of his anointed. And also, "You are my son; today I have begotten you." It goes on to say, "Ask of me, and I will give the nations of the world as a heritage and the ends of the earth as your possession." Jesus didn't neglect to ask his Father for that authority, and your authority derives from him. The command from God is to repent and to turn to Christ for forgiveness. Do what's right by God, not what's right in your own eyes. Trust in him and obey his word regardless of the consequences. Thank you.
That exhausts all registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Michael Bonneywell, representing Pittsburgh. So I just wanted to address some critical issues. One of the first things before I read my letter is like, the current agenda for the day, is this how you guys like conducted? It's just not worth two squirrel farts. Like where's the forty million dollars that we're missing for affordable housing? Let's talk about the fact that there's all these vacant properties, the prisons that we could be, ah, let me start, sorry. "The plight of individuals experiencing homelessness is something that urges heavily on my heart. I urge the city council to explore innovative solutions to provide shelter and support for those in needs, such as repurposing vacant properties, revanading abandoned homes, and renovating the former prison on the north side." I also want to talk about how the people in the service industry who are servers, they only get paid two dollars and thirty-seven cents an hour. I was a server when I was eighteen in Tennessee, and that's a travesty of justice. They deserve minimum wage, and everybody deserves a fair equitable wage if they work in the city so it can promote economic stability for all of our residents. And, you know, there's a lot of litter. I mean, our city's marred with abundance of garbage and litter, health hazards for residents and visitors like me. I implore the city to take actions and address this issue through comprehensive waste management strategies, public education campaigns, and strict enforcement of littering laws, preserving the cleanest of our streets not only essential to the well-being of our community, but also critical for maintaining our city's reputation as a desirable place to live. Because this is one of the most beautiful historical cities I've been in, and it's such a beautiful city. It's a shame. And the last thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to urge city councils to support vulnerable adults' resources who are particularly vulnerable, particularly women who find themselves in precarious situations due to their homelessness or other situations. Safe housing, affordable healthcare, social services, and as paramount to well-being and security for all the members of our community.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's at the top of the hill. The senior citizen home up there. Today is April the 30th, and this day, forty-one years ago, I married my husband Harold. So it's been, it's been, it's been kind of shaky, but also I want you to remember, when I come down here and I'm talking, my husband worked for this city for over twenty years, and he's crippled now from working in the building, out there in East Liberty. Three of them because of asbestos. One died, another had a stroke, and my husband had two strokes. So when I come down here, I'm looking at gents, that gents can make orders. You make rules, but you don't understand. We suffer because of what gents do. We suffer, and I'm still suffering about my son. Gents don't want to hear that. You don't want to hear when I say my son was begging for his life. Five white cops out there in Wilkinsburg took and let him die. He was begging for his life. But talking, coming all these years and talking with Mr., with Dr. Miller, he has helped me to see, when my son was being kicked to death, when I felt the pains, my son wasn't suffering. He sent him to me. So when I talk about my son, I'm talking about him because I don't want another mother, do you understand, another mother or another person have to go through this. Anytime five white cops walked out and said, "If the troublemaker starts any more trouble," I know my son was crying, because if you lied on him, I had, if you told a lie, you're going to get beaten. But if you tell the truth, I might not. So my son knew, don't lie to me, because I might. I wasn't one for beating children. I didn't like to be beat. I was beaten with a rubber hose in the foster home. My daughter, my sister, I told you, that died. Put, they put her in a home, and she had to clean white people's houses. We were treated like dirt, and I'm still treated the same way in here. But I'm praying for gents, because I'm feeling a little better about gents, because you don't understand that you, you have to pay for what you, you're going to have to ask them. I'm asking for what I did, and I know it. But gents, and you, you get paid to take and make stupid mistakes, and if we say something, you get mad. You don't want us to come. I'm going to keep coming, because you need to understand, you don't know what's happening in my neighborhood. You don't come in my neighborhood. And then this part about the mayor coming up there and giving Saul Houdin's brother a plaque and a proclamation for cleaning up in the neighborhood, where you garbage men leave, you city garbage men leave the garbage. I clean up there. We all clean. And why Saul Houdin's brother get a plaque? He spent money for this man. Do you understand that netting and that scrumming is, come on, what work for us not Saul Houdin and his brother?
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilwoman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill Number 417, Resolution Amending Resolution 309 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the Commission on Human Relations to expand the agreement with King 360 to include two additional software licenses yearly by increasing the approved amount by $5,924.97 for an amended total cost not to exceed $59,865.72 over five years.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 418, Resolution Amending Resolution 317 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Monday.com, an online project management and portfolio management tool for use with multiple city departments by increasing the approved amount by $70,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $244,000 over four years.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. President. I actually have one, but I forgot to bring it. The one for the parks and parks they held last week.
You didn't tell me you wanted to.
That's okay. Maybe we'll do it tomorrow.
We'll do it next, we'll introduce it next week.
Put it on next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
So that takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're still smoking from your.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 419, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Demira Atkins in an Amount Not to Exceed $6,087.06 Over One Year in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Her Vehicle from an Accident with the City Emergency Services Vehicle on December 29, 2023.
And then Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure. Councilman Wilson for Councilwoman Warwick.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 420, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for the Spring Hill Park Rehabilitation Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $562,605 with a match of $562,605 from the City of Pittsburgh's 2024 capital budget for a total project cost of $1,125,210 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 421, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement with Pittsburgh Regional Transit for Assistance with Construction of a New Bus Shelter Within the Public Right-of-Way of Penn Avenue Near the Intersection of North St. Clair Street in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 422, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grand Funds in the Amount of $100,000 to Develop a Transit Plan in the West End. Bill Number 423, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II, Fiscal Article I Administration, Chapter 21805, Capital Budget and Improvement Plan Project Authorization to Require Weekly Written Notice of Grant Applications to Be Read, Received, and Filed by City Council. And Bill Number 424, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II, Fiscal Article I Administration, Chapter 219 Operating Budget by Revising Section 21903 Collaborative Budgeting Process to Require Weekly Written Notice of Grant Applications to Be Read, Received, and Filed by City Council.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, and on behalf of myself, I have two.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 425, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Council as a Body to Pay Annual Membership Dues for 2024 to the Community Foundation for the Alleghenies for the Connect Program at a Cost Not to Exceed $6,891. And Bill Number 426, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, Effective December 27, 2021, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Oakland Business Improvement District Innovate Pittsburgh Partnership by $5,000 and Still City Boxing Association by $2,000 and Increasing Pittsburgh National Youth Boxing by $7,000 in Authorized Subsequent Agreements."
Thank you. We'll now move on to reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, presenting on the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 411, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for April 22nd, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 373, Resolution Authorizing the City Controller to Pay Annual Membership Dues for 2024 to the Community Foundation for the Alleghenies for the Connect Program at a Cost Not to Exceed $6,891. Bill 374, Resolution Amending Resolution 302 of 2022, which provided for professional services agreement with Binkley Canavi for costs associated with printing and mailing the popular annual financial report for the City Controller's Office at a Cost Not to Exceed $19,100 for one year.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, presenting on the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 412, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for April 22nd, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 366, Resolution Amending Resolution 686 of 2020, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into an amended professional service agreement or agreements with ShotSpotter, Inc., Dawn Business as SST, Inc., for the continuation and expansion of the city's gunshot detection system by updating the vendor name and increasing the approved amount by $132,932 for an amended total cost not to exceed $8,481,204 over eight years.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge the public input that we got were concerns about ShotSpotter and its purported kind of misinformation or inaccuracy in other cities. We, that was online for the discussion last week, and I do think that we should have continued conversation. I do want to clarify for some of the commenters that we are not renewing the total contract here. This is merely as an expansion to another square mile of the city at a cost of a hundred and basically $133,000. But that, I think a robust discussion is in front of us. There are some concerns about cost effectiveness. I think on both sides, right? One side seemed to be recounting number of arrests resulting, but the kind of in favor of ShotSpotter really talked about the number of victims whose lives were saved because of the rapid response to gun incidents. So I'm voting in favor today, but I know that we look forward to a more robust discussion about ShotSpotter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith?
Thank you. I just want to say that I think it's, we need to have a real discussion, not just about ShotSpotter, but the preventive measures that we want to do and have in place so that ShotSpotters and cameras and all the other things that we're putting money into are not needed because we're preventing the crimes from happening in the first place. So while we're talking about ShotSpotter, I hope we have that conversation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I'd like to echo Councilwoman Gross's comments. Again, I am going to vote affirmatively in support of the residents of Carrick, and Councilman Coghill are very much in support of expanding into the square mile into Carrick. But I do agree with Councilwoman Gross that we have to have a much more robust conversation between now and next year when we come to the decision of deciding to either renew, you know, the contract or not. I think that, you know, the public deserves to be a part of that robust conversation. As I said, at the standing committee meeting, I think in the past, SpotShotter was more framed as a crime prevention tool, but when they, you know, came to the table, it was more about, you know, the response time and saving lives, which obviously, you know, is very important. Council President, I think you spoke very eloquently about, you know, what is the cost of a life. So I very much appreciate that, and I think, you know, the public would benefit from that discussion as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
No, I'm just going to say you always speak very eloquently on a lot of subjects, so thank you for that.
Thank you. If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bills haven't received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 413, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for April 22nd, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 401, Resolution Providing for Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with Michael Baker International, Inc., for Costs Associated with the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $3,826,849.93, an increase of $696,525.27 for the previously legislated contract authorization.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill hasn't received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting on the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 414, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for April 22nd, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 375, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Landmarks SGA LLC to Create Historic District Guidelines for the Mexican War Streets Expansion, Shinley Farms, and Roslyn Place Historic Districts for an Amount Not to Exceed $70,000.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill hasn't received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting on the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 415, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for April 22nd, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 367, Resolution Amending Resolution 165 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements and Amendments thereto for Professional Services with E Plus Technology, Inc., for System Critical Adjustments, Improvements, and Upgrades to Maintain the City of Pittsburgh's Network Functionality by Increasing the Approved Amount by $20,000 and Extend
Performance, Asset Management and Technology for April 22, 2024, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 367, Resolution Amending Resolution 165 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements and Amendments thereto for Professional Services with E Plus Technology, Inc., for System Critical Adjustments, Improvements, and Upgrades to Maintain the City of Pittsburgh's Network Functionality by Increasing the Approved Amount by $20,000 and Extending the Contract until August 31, 2024. The amended total cost not to exceed of the contract will now be $699,024.8.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill hasn't received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting on the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 415, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology for April 22, 2024, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 367, Resolution Amending Resolution 165 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements and Amendments thereto for Professional Services with E Plus Technology, Inc., for System Critical Adjustments, Improvements, and Upgrades to Maintain the City of Pittsburgh's Network Functionality by Increasing the Approved Amount by $20,000 and Extending the Contract until August 31, 2024. The amended total cost not to exceed of the contract will now be $699,024.8.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill hasn't received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Mosley, presenting on the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 416, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for April 22, 2024, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 368, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 126 Hazelwood Avenue and Zero Hazelwood Avenue at No Cost to the City. Bill 370, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of Southwestern PA Commission for One-Year Membership Dues in an Amount Not to Exceed $96,801. Bill 371, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of Connect Congress of Neighboring Communities for One-Year Membership Dues in an Amount Not to Exceed $13,781. And Bill 372, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority in the Amount of $98,471 for Stormwater Work Completed at Lawn and Ophelia Park.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill hasn't received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The bills haven't received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Mosley, presenting on the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 416, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for April 22, 2024, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 368, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 126 Hazelwood Avenue and Zero Hazelwood Avenue at No Cost to the City. Bill 370, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of Southwestern PA Commission for One-Year Membership Dues in an Amount Not to Exceed $96,801. Bill 371, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of Connect Congress of Neighboring Communities for One-Year Membership Dues in an Amount Not to Exceed $13,781. And Bill 372, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority in the Amount of $98,471 for Stormwater Work Completed at Lawn and Ophelia Park.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr.